Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead and I'm going to call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session of Tuesday, June 25, 2024 at 6:32 PM in the Assembly Chambers. And the first item we have is Citizens Comments. And the local number is 907-486-3231. And the toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to call in or come forward and sign in and speak, please do so at this time. I'll wait 30 seconds and then we'll move on. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go ahead and continue. Regular agenda items, the first one is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA Fisheries Equity and Environmental Justice Implementation Plan for our National Equity and Environmental Justice Strategy in Alaska Presentation. This is approximately a 15-minute presentation that'll be made to us. And is it Maggie, or what's your name, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Maggie, but actually Emily Wilson is going to be giving the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I'll let you ladies continue.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate this invitation. Thank you for -- good evening, everybody. And we, first off, thank you for the opportunity to come speak with the Assembly Work Session -- Work Session to share information on the NOAA Fisheries Equity and Environmental Justice Effort. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you this evening. For those who may not know me, I'm Emily Wilson. I'm the Tribal Relations Coordinator for the Alaska Region. On my grandmother's side, I'm a descendant of the Shinnecock Nation. We're the East Coast peoples of the Stony Shore. And on my grandfather's side, I have French and German heritage. I'm a fisheries biologist by trade and a previous tribal liaison in the West Coast region with NOAA, serving my native brothers and sisters there. And my husband and I are fairly new residents of Alaska. So we've been living and working in the Southeast Alaska Native Village of Yakitat for the last year and a half. So it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Before I kick off our talk, I want to make sure that we introduce our team, and they have a chance to -- you have a chance to get to know them. Tonight, I have Maggie Mooney-Sous with me and Mabel Baldwin-Shafer. And they're from our Science Center. So let's start with Maggie first, and then we'll move to Mabel if she's on the line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for allowing us to present to you tonight. I'm Maggie Mooney-Sous. I am the Communications Program Manager for the Alaska Fisheries Science Center. And my family is Irish and French, and I grew up actually in Canada. So I'm very excited, have an opportunity to share with you some of the work we're doing at the Alaska Fisheries Science Center and the Alaska Regional Office. And I'm not sure Mabel is on, but I can -- I'll ping her if she happens to get on a little bit late, Emily.
All right, sounds good. And Mabel Baldwin-Shafer is our Tribal Research Coordinator that works with us in our Alaska Science -- Fisheries Science Center. So you'll probably hear more from her. Hopefully, she'll be able to connect soon. If not, she's on our contact list at the end of the presentation. All right, so without further ado, now that you know a little bit about us and what we do for NOAA Fisheries, let's get started with our presentation. I'm going to share some background information on the NOAA Fisheries EEJ Strategy, the development of individual implementation plans, particularly the Alaska Implementation Plan, what ocean equity means to our agency, and our definition of underserved communities. And then I'll just take a short dive into our EEJ more, I guess I should say, a more detailed dive into the Alaska EEJ Implementation Plan and the core areas and community feedback that we've received thus far. So I want to, I want to share then, at the very end, some opening questions to help start some discussion and dialogue with you in the 15 minutes that we have. So I'll do my best to get through all of the information that I want to share on the background of this, and then open that up for Q and A, and then finally provide some contact information for you at the end. So, moving on to Slide 2. Just this last year, in May of 2023, the National Marine Fisheries Service released our Equity and Environmental Justice Strategy. This was intended to be a national strategy for implementing EEJ across all NOAA line offices, regions, and science centers across that nation. And so in that strategy, we had three goals that were involved in developing the national outlook. It's to prioritize the identification, the equitable treatment, and meaningful involvement of underserved communities, to provide equitable delivery of those services to communities, and to three, prioritize EEJ in our mandated and mission work with an accountability piece or a built-in way in order in which we could describe progress. Slide 3. I truly believe that a picture can represent a thousand words, and I wanted to share with you a slide that represents our next step based on the national strategy. So the national strategy, as I mentioned, that came out in May of last year, started in 2021 and included multiple rounds of internal and external input. And I want to thank our Alaska Native partners for providing comments to the national plan. And when it was released, we moved from a national focus to a regional focus. And that national EEJ strategy was then a template in order to develop implementation plans across the nation with each region, with each Science Center, and each program office. And for example, we've developed a draft EEJ Implementation Plan for the Alaska Region based on the feedback that we received last year during our Town Hall EEJ Conference Calls with tribes and underserved fishing communities, and during our invitational tribal meetings. And this was all part of sometimes an uncomfortable effort to engage many communities as we could within the confines of our budget, and also use our EEJ principles to build that strategy and what we've heard to incorporate that into building an implementation plan. So writing this strategy included rounds of both internal and external input. So moving to Slide 4. So what is ocean equity exactly? There is recognition on the part of our agency to, for the need to bring equity concerns in the marine ocean environment, specifically fisheries. The national strategy pulls out a few points. While much of the terrestrial environmental justice literature has focused on the disproportionate burden of toxicity and subsequent health outcomes, what does this really mean for fisheries and for the work that we do? And the better question is how this relates to fisheries and how to operationalize equity within this context. So fortunately, we could look at the work of Bennett et al. 2019. Bennett describes in his work that environmental justice is more broadly includes a distributional, a recognitional, and a procedural justice piece. And this means that we can include unequal distribution of fishery resources. Pardon me for a moment. So we can establish that unequal distribution of fishery resources or regulatory burdens. We can expand fisheries research to be co-produced and reflect diverse knowledge systems. And we can create a restructuring of decision-making to ensure that we have authentic participation with processes that are accountable to those that are impacted the most. And in Bennett et al.'s publication in 2021, he expands this information by describing advancing social equity in marine conservation requires making sure we pay attention to recognition and recognition through acknowledgement and respect for diverse peoples and perspectives. And this includes the use of marine environment, levels of dependence and diversity in access and needs. Also, looking at fair distribution of impacts through maximized benefits and minimizing burdens. So how are we measuring in these contexts? How are we relate to access to data and representation? Are we providing food security, and if we're doing that, to whom? And then finally, looking at procedures through fostering participation in decision-making and good governance. And this includes management through championing and supporting local involvement and leadership. It also includes the environment through ensuring the efficacy of conservation actions and adequacy of management to ensure benefits to nature and people. And then finally, to address the structural barriers and the institutional roots of inequity that evolved in the conservation realm. So it means taking a look at what we can do given the limited resources and capacity that we have, the existing material inequities that might be out there, and representation, and working with all of you to improve ways in which we can make strides in that arena. So moving on to Slide 5. One unique aspect of the strategy was how to best compile a list of underserved communities to include. And the EEJ team started with a list of identified groups that were historically underserved or identified as historically underserved under the federal government, as listed in Biden's Executive Order 13985. That's the list you see in the middle of your slide there, in the center, in the light teal color. And for example, it includes groups such as gender groups, women and girls, but also racial and religious minority groups. And then the later, later on, the list was expanded to LBG, GQ-plus persons and persons with disabilities. And over time, we further expanded it to persons in rural or urban areas and persons adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality. And to this list of underserved communities, we also added subsets of fishery groups. So our constituents, those that we serve. And adding subsistence users was important to us, including processors and clue, and crew that you see there indicated in the middle box, as well as U.S. Island Territories and commonwealths that make up part of the Pacific Islands and Southeast Region that are captured in that box to the far, far right there. So what does this mean for Alaska regions? And what does it mean to be part of an underserved community? For Alaska, this primarily means Alaska Native communities or Alaska rural communities that want to talk with us. It includes subsistence fishers. It includes commercial and recreational users. It includes those that may not otherwise have a voice, perhaps in the North Pacific Fisheries Council meetings or other governmental forums in which we need to make sure we're elevating those voices. So on Slide 6, EEJ takes on different forms for the Alaska region when it comes to rural and remote communities. And Alaska retains the largest coastline in the United States. Forty percent of all federally recognized tribes in the U.S. reside here, as well as several other ethnic groups. And Alaska communities are broad in geographic scope with multiple rural and remote villages that encounter limited access to technology and services and are historically disadvantaged communities. So this slide captures a few photos of our recent outreach in both Katabou in mid-April and Kodiak in early June. The photos to the right are from the Katabou EEJ trip. And the top-right photo is an example of where we've adapted and learned to be more creative in our messaging using radio versus email announcements in order to share our EEJ efforts and public meetings in remote villages. The three photos to the left are from our recent trip to Kodiak, where we held a public meeting at the Best Western Kodiak Inn and met with small fishing boat groups. We met with trawling groups. We also met with the Shunak, Shunak tribe of Kodiak, as well as the Alutek tribe of Old Harbor. And many are isolated communities that heavily rely on marine resources for subsistence and their traditional way of life. And in addition, there's this heightened vulnerability to climate change for both coastal and interior communities, such as the warming of the Bering Sea, which is causing food security issues in the YK region. And we understand that there are strong cultural practices and norms that we must adhere to in order to engage with these communities. For example, many communities require a tribal sponsor in order to enter that community and set up meetings and have important conversations such as this, so that we can improve on the way we do business and the services that we provide to each of the communities here in Alaska. Moving to Slide 7. In the national EEJ strategy, we developed a framework with six core areas to consider when implementing our EEJ in our agency or among our agency line offices, science centers, and programs. And these contain elements of distributable, recognitional, and procedural justice that's outlined in Bennett et al., but also pays close attention to the structure of NIMPs and how our staff would be able to easily recognize their work in the strategy and be a part of that and buy into this process. If we don't have buy-in, it's just going to be another plan that may be collecting dust on the shelf. So we start with policies and plans that you see at the top, moving clockwise. We include research and monitoring, outreach and engagement, and we move to benefits and inclusive government. And in the middle of all these six core areas is empowering environment. And this is really the foundation for long-term EEJ institutionalization and includes leadership support and a trained and diverse workforce. And all other core areas depend on this empowering environment in order to be successful. This is what's going to carry this plan into the future and allow us to continue to work on this for generations to come. And so there are cross-cutting EEJ issues that are found in these areas, and that's why they're all connected. We want to distinguish these areas for NOAA Fisheries to work on because EEJ is often interpreted as only being about increasing our outreach and education, but there's so much more. And we highlight other core areas to show that EEJ fits into everything that we do. We want it to be institutionalized. So moving to Slide 8. I want to share with you some examples of community feedback we've received as an agency. Recommendations that we've received from underserved groups include visiting the communities, scheduling face-to-face meetings to build trust and strong relationships with all of you. We've heard feedback on increasing indigenous seats in the North Pacific Fisheries Management Council and other governing bodies for tribal representation. And to focus really on the co-development and co-production of data and information, and to make sure that we solicit and incorporate traditional indigenous knowledge into those processes and procedures, whether it's in the policy and management realm or whether it's in the research realm. Moving to Slide, Slide 9. We accomplished this effort in Alaska by dividing our EEJ efforts into two phases based on agency and staff capacity and funding. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the first phase began last year where we hosted our Town Hall Conference Calls to determine preferred methods, seasons, locations, and best ways to talk with each of you and gain your feedback on ways in which we can improve. We also included soliciting comments by December 1 of last year to include in the draft Alaska Implementation Plan that was set for the April deadline this year by our NOAA Fisheries Headquarters. And we just kicked off our second phase of the process where we're hosting community hub meetings in key locations across the state in order to gain community feedback to incorporate into the plan. And this is a living document. So any feedback we receive now and into the future would be incorporated into our next rendition of the plan. So currently, we're seeking feedback by September 30 in order to incorporate this information into a new rendition of the plan by December 2024. So I want to move to Slide 10, where I want to share a few questions to you to open up with you, to open up our discussion. And feel free to take a moment to contemplate these and ask any questions you may have for the team regarding in our presentation. And so here on our list of, on Slide 10 for questions and discussions, we hope to learn for you, from you, how we can improve science and management for sustainable fisheries, protected resources, and marine ecosystems to better serve our communities. What types of information regarding our science and management are you interested in receiving from us? And then finally, how we can best provide that information to you, whether that's through email, publications, presentations, et cetera. And I'll pause there for any questions.
Any discussion? Bo?
Thank you for the presentation. I attended the workshop, the climate workshop that was hosted here during the most recent council session in Kodiak. And there was a fair amount of indigenous participants there. And we worked through those two days of exercises and roundtables with, with various stakeholders, a lot of very common lobbyists and fishery representatives, but it was unique in that there were more indigenous participants at this than I've seen at any other council-related meeting or federal-related meeting. And overwhelmingly, the feedback from those indigenous participants was all of this information for these, these projects or these exercises is, it goes out, it gets, you know, outreach is great, and there's plenty of information on websites and pamphlets and handouts, but they rarely come with a feedback loop. And the reason I mention that is those who mentioned this said, you know, most people, they don't have a dedicated job. They're not lobbyists for their, for their tribes. They don't have the time to dedicate to diving into these topics and opportunities to give you the information you're looking for. And, and the point I'm getting around to is looking at, at one of the opportunities to hire liaisons, how realistic is that for our borough and, and villagers? Because without having a dedicated funded position to allow someone to get, dedicate their time to gather this information to get it back to you, you're going to put this information out, and it's going to go in a straight line, and you're not going to get it back. And that's my concern with these kind of initiatives, that we don't have a feedback loop, and that typically is going to have to happen with hiring a liaison to represent the villages in our borough.
Can I just say something to that?
Sure.
One of the things that we did hear loud and clear is that people need resources so that there can be this two-way exchange of information and collaboration on research. That's one of the things that you'll see captured in our first rendition or the, of this report that we're putting together. The other thing we're trying to do, and we're unfortunate, and I'm probably, I think Alaska's been somewhat flooded with IRA money. The, those funds, those funds have been provided to, they're competitive funds to a large degree, but there is pools of money available to support indigenous engagement and to provide the resources so that communities can come to the table to participate in resource, in research, as well as potentially other activities. And this year, for the first time, the Alaska Fisheries Science Center was able to put out a notice of funding opportunity. It's not huge. It was about $500,000 this year, and we expect it to be about $250,000 next year. But it is an opportunity for tribes, boroughs, to put in a proposal and, and get some funding to do things like, but, you know, the problem is it's, I can't say it's sustained funding, but at least it's some seed money to, to support some of those ideas like you're suggesting, like having a liaison.
Continue, Bo.
Thank you. That's my, that's my encouragement based on the overwhelming feedback we, we listened to from, from those participants is, is absent having some resources to get, to get, dedicate someone to really dig in on behalf of the tribes in our borough or in our archipelago. You know, most people are working several jobs. They have, they're trying to feed their families and still maintain their subsistence lifestyle. And so I would encourage you to find ways to not necessarily force the issue, but make sure that, that these opportunities are making it to the villages, and they're aware that they can apply for them. But thank you very much for, for the presentation.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. And any other information you might be looking from, from us at this time? I'll let you go ahead and sum up.
All right. So we just want to thank you for your time this evening. On the final slide, we list the contacts for our EEJ tribal team. And so if there's no pinpointed information that you want to share with us tonight, feel free to contact any one of the three folks that you see on that list. That's myself, Maggie Mooney-Sous, and Mabel Baldwin-Shafer regarding any concerns that you might have or issues that you want to highlight for us. And the most important thing is on that second to last slide, on the top right, you'll see a box for a link to a EEJ feedback form. So maybe this is a good alternative to not, I understand, capacity issues. Each of us that are on this presentation tonight have other full-time jobs aside from our EEJ work. We just, it's very important to us, and we volunteered to be on this team to be able to work with Alaska communities and others like yourself, boroughs, and, and tribes, and corporations, et cetera, in order to make sure that we're addressing these needs. And so we're doing what we can within the capacity that we have. And one of the ways to get us quick feedback, first is having a hired tribal liaison in lieu of having that funding available just yet in order to provide that opportunity to you. There is a feedback form. So you can share that within your networks, within the Borough Assembly and others, bring that back to your communities. And that's a good way in order to answer a few questions, get some important feedback to us without dedicating a tremendous amount of time, because I know you all have busy schedules and a lot on your plates. So thank you again for your gift of time tonight.
And thank you for taking your time to make this presentation for us. Take care. Bye-bye. Okay. Bye-bye. Okay, next item is Sonny Creek Rifle Range Lease Discussion. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you will remember, we've been taking a look at this lease over the period of a couple of meetings, and there are some questions that came up before. So just a brief overview, this is land that we have purchased with a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. This lease is for five years with up to four additional five-year periods, which means it is a disposal. So it's a special kind of lease that we use when it goes to KISA. The rent is $500 a year. In your packet tonight, on lease pages four and five are the only places where you'll see changes. On page four, we moved the language about automatic weapons and foot-pounds of muzzle energy. I know there is an assembly member who had questions around that. I talked to our borough attorney. That language put, was put in there because he used it in a different lease, and it was related to sound, because the range that he was using for it was closer to housing, so they were concerned about sound. So we removed that and renumbered those sections. And then we, at the bottom of page four, moving into page five, we clarified the language around the lead management plan to make sure that it was only led from this point forward, that the plan gets turned into the Kodiak Island Borough. But then we work with appropriate agencies to make sure that's the direction that the EPA wants us to go in. These are fairly new, and there aren't a lot of places in Alaska doing these, so we're going to be on the forefront of that. And we removed the language about this issue being a financial issue that KISA would be solely responsible for, because they are not in the language in there before, made it sound like they are going to be responsible for lead all the way back to World War II. So that has been removed as well. And we do have KISA reps in the audience, Pat's here, if we have questions of KISA about this. But I think those two questions were the only questions that came up before. So once we answer questions tonight and get that stuff clarified, it takes a resolution to pass this, so we'll update that resolution, and it'll come before you in July if we're ready to do that.
Discussion. Question, Scott.
The automatic weapon clause in this, was that presumably for noise as well as the 600-foot pounds?
I, I don't think so. I think that was just language taken over for some other reason. And originally, I thought it was because of insurance issues, but it doesn't appear that that was why it was put in. That must have been just someone's personal preference on not liking that type of weapon style.
Me neither. And it's kind of hard to get a permit for an automatic weapon that's serially firing, not single-shot kinds of things.
You want to, Pat, look, he has information. Pat, you just have to push the button where it says push, and the light will turn green.
All right, can everybody hear me clearly?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, cool. So just on the subject of the automatic weapons, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Automatic weapons are not legal for civilians to own. They're highly, highly, highly regulated, and in fact, the most regulated weapon of any kind in the United States. So the only people that can use automatic weapons are going to be law enforcement, military, or in the very rare case, a person with this specialty permit for it. So putting in an automatic weapons clause in here is going to really limit your Coast Guard, Navy SEAL, Alaska State Troopers, Kodiak Police Department, and other law enforcement trainings. It won't actually affect civilians in any way. These people that I just mentioned that have access and have authority to use automatic weapons, obviously are going to be highly trained, highly regulated, supervised at all times. So putting a clause like this in here, in my opinion, is going to really limit for no reason. Basically, we're going to be limiting people that need to use those for training.
Bo.
And I imagine anyone using those types of weapons, they're going to probably lock down the range for that period of time.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So anytime military law enforcement uses the range from us, we sign, we sign a little contract with them, they lock that front gate, and then the full range is under their control for, usually it's a four-hour period.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick.
Absolutely.
Any further questions or discussion? Amy?
So if everything looks good, we'll go ahead and we'll put it on for July 18th. That's the next regular meeting, so you'll see it in packet review on July 11th.
Sounds good. All right. So then, moving on to the packet review, the first thing will be awards and presentation. There's that presentation to Tessa Davis, it's a Plan 2045 Logo Design Contest winner. And my understanding is they'll be here for that. Next item is a public hearing on ordinance FY 2024-2A, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending ordinance number FY 2024-2, fiscal year 24 budget by amending budgets to account for various revenues that are over budget, providing for additional expenditures, and moving funds between projects. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual end-of-year budget that goes back and makes what we passed at the beginning of the fiscal year true. We do have our Finance Director tonight here if you have questions. But you can see, I think the best explanation comes between lines nine and 21 in the actual ordinance, where you can see we're transferring within the general fund $5,000 to the Economic Development Department. That's that SLR group fund that we used for the application for the hydrology study. They came and helped us get that, and we're currently have that out for RFP, so we were successful. The second thing is a transfer within the general fund of $590,000 from the fund balance to the General Administration Department. That was for our Cana attorney payments that we had to pay. And then we're requesting a return of $23,177.94 from the Capital Project Fund to the Hospital Fund, because we had more money than we needed for the fuel tank replacement. And then a transfer of $9,859.77 from the Long-Term Care Center Fund to the Capital Project Fund. That would be the extra money that we require to pay off and settle out that fuel tank replacement project from a few years ago. And so those are all the funds that we have worked with Providence to get those settled so we can have those closed out before we walk into next year's finances, which it's been a few years since that happened, so we're very happy to get those settled.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is under contracts, contract number FY 2024-38, approval for elevator maintenance service with Otis Elevator Company at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for maintenance for the elevator at Kodiak Fisheries Research Center, and our Engineering Facilities Director is here to tell you about how that RFP and bid opening process went.
Good evening, thank you. Basically, this has been a three-year contract in the past. Prior to this particular contract, this past contractor, excuse me, was Tyson Krupp, TKE Elevators, is now that company. Prior to that, for the previous two, three-year contract, it was Arctic Elevator. Currently, in the state of Alaska, you basically have two firms bidding. You have Tyson Krupp or TKE, and you also have Otis Elevator. In this particular case, in this request for proposal, EF went out and stated that if the proposer had a tiered system, that we would consider that. And when it was reviewed, when they were submitted, we had TKE and Otis. Otis actually submitted on a tiered system. So this will allow us to, we could buy up on the amount of service we have. So as an elevator increases in age, sometimes you actually want to buy up, so you could get, and I'm going to just term it like a bronze, a silver, and a gold package. And if you decide that your elevator's old enough and you want a gold package, there are components within the elevator itself that would be covered under that contract, rather than having to replace an internal pump on a separate cost, because that pump would not be considered under a maintenance contract. The other thing that this tiered one does is it allows us to, it allows us and guarantees our four-year testing cycles, so you have to do a four-year weight test on each elevator. When the evaluation committee went through it, they felt that the tiered system was a better value. So this is technically, we're looking at best value, not necessarily cheapest, contract. So that would be the only change that's happened before, and we're recommending that the Borough approve the contract for Otis Elevator for this next three-year period. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, any questions? I guess one question I'd have, this tiered package is kind of like a little bit of an insurance policy, certain things are covered within the different tiers.
There are more items covered, so if all of a sudden we detect that there's something going on specifically, we can actually like buy up during the contract period, which I think is a smart idea. Elevator's 25 years old, so we're just, it's just not used as much as the hospital, you know, would be my comment, as sooner or later, it's going to need major maintenance. I think this is a smarter way to go.
Okay. James?
Thank you. I appreciate this. I'm glad that they did the tiered. I have dealt with both of these companies for the elevator that I deal with on a daily basis, it seems. The elevator that I have is much older than the ones that we're talking about. The one thing that I have noticed with Otis is they're hard to schedule. They are a preferred company in Alaska, they do a really good job, so they're hard to schedule, so hopefully they'll be a little more receptive to the borough. TK seems to do multiple trips, which brings, drives up the cost. I know it seems to send in a technician that can do it in one trip, so I appreciate that they came in with a tiered system.
Dave?
Well, you also notice that Providence themselves are starting to utilize Otis and their other facilities outside of Kodiak. I think this is an attempt for Otis to get back into the market in Kodiak, so I think it's a good thing to have competition.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is contract number FY 2025-2, animal control contract between Kodiak Island Borough and the City of Kodiak for July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2026, in the amount of $154,430 for year one and $156,930 for year two. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a contract that we do every two years to ensure the control of animals outside of the city for the purpose of protecting public health and safety, which is one of our powers. The Kodiak Island Borough is authorized to partner with the City of Kodiak to provide animal control services. In KIB code section 6.04.200C, which is included in your packet tonight, for the first year, the $154,430 is split equally between the City of Kodiak's agreement with the Humane Society and the salary costs for animal control officer.
Any discussion? James?
So we just finalize our budget, and I'm super happy that the city gave this to us so swiftly, so that we could be prepared for it. Now we've got to do a budget adjustment because we didn't, the 154? I thought it was 152 that we...
I don't have the budget in front of me, but I'll have to look.
So looking at the budget that was presented, I believe it was 152, so it's, I believe it's 2,000 different for this fiscal year. But again, I mean, it's 2,000 bucks, but, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, move on to contract number FY 2025-3, Building Inspection Program Memorandum of Agreement between the Kodiak Island Borough and the City of Kodiak for fiscal years 2025 to fiscal year 2029. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This MOA reestablishes the responsibilities of the City of Kodiak and the Kodiak Island Borough to continue the single program for the inspection of buildings with the jurisdiction of both governments. In addition to building inspections, there's also an attached appendix for both zoning compliance program and the fire safety program. Currently, this MOA has been on a month-to-month agreement since it actually expired at the end of fiscal year '23. The updated agreement is good for five years and would take us through June 30th, 2029.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is resolutions. We have resolution number FY 2024-22, authorizing the disposal of borough land to Kodiak Electric Association for the purpose of utility right-of-way and easement. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kodiak Electric Association has requested an easement on borough land. It's generally located behind the Safeway store for installation and maintenance of a high-voltage underground conductor as an alternative route for the Dark Lake feeder line. In accordance with Borough Code, the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request for disposal of borough land and provide their favorable recommendation in their resolution fiscal year 2024-02, which is included in your packet tonight. There's also a sheet indicating the placement of the easement and KIA's right-of-way agreement that we use, we do it frequently, so we have an agreement that we use just with them, and that's in there for your consideration of this resolution. I also, sorry, I would also add quick that this utility easement would likely benefit the Kodiak Island Borough in the future if we decide to develop that Dark Lake area into whatever use we might want it for in the future.
Bo?
Thank you. That was the exact question I was going to ask, were they going to be prepared to expand from that location?
Yes, they are. So if we decide that we're going to do a contractor building over there, or, I don't want to say the other options out loud because I don't want to encourage them, but yes, that they are prepared to expand across. And actually, I just talked to Engineering Facilities today about if we want to start purting poles across that way, just so we can power things like security cameras. And we found out today that there are talking cameras, so if you go in a zone and it catches movement and they can say, "Stop, you are, you know, you are disposing of something in the wrong area." So we're looking at alternatives for that area because it continues to be a high-traffic place where people are disposing of stuff improperly.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and basically, this kind of helps loop the system, is what it does for KIA, so, on there. So next one is resolution number FY 2025-2, reestablishing the fees of the Kodiak Island Borough. Amy, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, our Finance Director is here tonight if you have any questions, but this is the once-a-year resolution that we do to establish the fees of the Kodiak Island Borough. It has language in the resolution that says it includes the changes, but you'll notice that there aren't any changes outside of crossing out the one year into the next. So we don't have any recommended changes from staff, so it's being moved forward to you just how it is from last fiscal year.
Status quo.
Yes.
Any questions? Seeing none, move on to, then under other items, there'll be confirmation of mayoral appointments to the Borough Lands Committee of Mr. Corey Gronn and Mr. Dave Townsend. So, any questions on there? So next item will be managers' comments. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got an invitation from the Kodiak Area Leadership Institute, which I'll be calling Cali from here on out, for the Assembly to attend a lunch and regional government session. It's tentatively scheduled for September 12th between 12:00 to 2:30. If more than three Assembly members would like to attend that, they are willing to put in a meeting notice in their agenda that says that there will be multiple Assembly members there so that they, we don't get in trouble with the Open Meetings Act. They're interested in reviewing Kodiak Island Borough capital improvement project process and our hazard mitigation plan, because we've been asking all of those village communities to participate in both of those, and that CIP process has already started. So we're going to have to either contact me or Nova and let us know if you are wanting to attend, and we'll talk about this again in the future, so we can get a better number. I also want to point out that this is an invitation-only event, so we're, when we're invited for one session, that's the session we are to go to, and then we're supposed to leave. They really watch their numbers and guard the topics and who's there, so they can speak freely. So they just want me to mention that we shall come to that session and then go about our business. Speaking of villages, Port Lions requested that our Community Development Department attended one of their meetings, and our, we had a couple of staff members go to their June 11th meeting via Zoom and talk about permitting processes and condemning buildings and what kind of powers they could have on their own outside of the Kodiak Island Borough powers. Port Lions is interested in Assembly members attending one of their meetings, so they can, we can get to know them and their processes. The next one is July 9th. If there's going to be travel, we have to start that as soon as possible, but obvious, they meet on Tuesdays, and it's once a month for those work sessions, so if we do want to go, that's something that we'll have to let Nova know and work on that travel. In order to better serve them and the people on the road system, we are looking at, well, actually, Community Development is working with our Special Projects Officer and IT to add a module to our website that would allow for some of our community development forms to be placed online, so people could go online and fill out permits. The danger with that is that we have to keep the paying for those separate, because if they put in a permit and they pay for it, it would seem as if it was approved, so we have to go through an approval process first before we can ask for payment, unless it's something that has to do with planning and zoning and they pay in advance before it goes through that process. But we're excited that that's an option for us to be able to explore, and we're looking forward to doing more things digitally. We had emergency management training happen here on June 10th and 11th. Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Services were on island, did two days of training. I listed out the manager report, some of the people were there. You can see KIB staff definitely ruled the day, we had the most people there. But I think the most beneficial for me were those four village public safety officers that came. I got put in a group with them in the back of the room, and we really got to learn about what their emergency processes looked like and what their interactions with the borough were like or not like, and learn from them and see how we could better serve them. So it was really educational, it was great training. I've already invited them back next year for training to get on their schedule early. They're only allowed to come to Alaska once a year, so I wanted to get on their schedule early. I don't have dates for that or anything, but it'll either be June or July next summer. We met, KIB staff met with the Alaska Waste Representatives to go over new proposed rates for residential and commercial customers. We got proposed rates from Alaska Waste that were really high, and so we had long conversations with them on what we could do to control those rates. They've agreed to keep our current fiscal year '24 rates into July of 2024 to give that Second Amendment to the solid waste contract time to go through the necessary steps and get approved. So the amendment is ready. I believe I talked to, Patricia stopped by my office before she left today, and she's on, she just finished page 20 of the 24 pages of code associated that has to be changed with that amendment. So it's a pretty significant change. And as soon as that's ready, it will go out to the Assembly as early as possible so people have time to review it. But it's scheduled right now for the 11th and the 18th. So it'll be in packet review on the 11th for the contract, but it'll be an ordinance introduction on the 18th, and it'll have to go through that regular schedule before it can be passed as an ordinance. So it takes a little bit more time for those ordinances to pass through, so it's not just the contract when we're changing the wording and the code to match. Bell's Flats flooding, the Sergeant Creek entrance has continued to see flooding. I think every time I talk to you about it, I'm like, "Oh, it was the worst one I've ever seen." And it really was the worst one I've ever seen. The flow of water across the Sergeant Creek was alarming. I drove through with 35-inch tires, totally fine, but then like a Corolla came up behind me, and they're like, "Ah!" So, and they just turn around and leave. So people aren't able to access their home. They're not leaving. And this was an extended period. It went on for several days because of those rains were really bad this last time. So I'm really happy that we have that hydrology study, RFP, going out. That's a long process. And so in order to try to get earlier relief for that problem, I have been in contact with Representative Stute's office, and they are working with DOT to see if there's emergency money. That land ownership in that area is difficult. It is a Kodiak Island Borough Service District road. It is being flooded by state right-of-way and Coast Guard property. That water that comes over between the fairgrounds and runs over that road and runs into Sergeant Creek has a lot of owners. So we're working on emergency funds to try to figure that out, and I have a staff member that I'm working with on Representative Stute's staff that is helping us find that. Mayor Art and I were able to attend the annual awards ceremony for Bayside Fire. It was at the Kodiak Marking Place, and it was a really nice night. Chief Ellis did a really good job, and it was really nice to see those folks get recognized for the work that they do. And we're really lucky to have such dedicated folks, so that was great. Last week, the Alaska State Chamber Board was here. Board of Directors were here on an outreach visit. Again, Mayor Art and I went to the public reception on Monday night, which was great, held at the Fogneck Center, got to meet a lot of folks and learn about what the State Chamber is up to. And it was really, it was one of those beautiful days where we really got to show Kodiak off, so that was really nice. I am working with the finance director, our finance director, and I met with the City of Kodiak Acting Manager and their finance director to work out the details of the E911 program that continues to be something where we give them the money that we collect, but they're billing us for a much larger amount. So we have to change the bill, and then they have to change their side, and it just goes back forth, and it seems like it's overly complicated. The acting manager and I are working together to make that a smoother system so that that billing can accurately reflect the money that we get. So we have another meeting set up for that, and I think we're making progress on that. We have four jobs that are currently in recruitment, and we have two of those, the landfill jobs for the Litchate Treatment Plant Operator and the Baylor One have interviews that are happening this week. So we're excited to have people coming in and interview for those. In community development, we wrapped up the survey on June 18th for the multi-jurisdictional, multi-hazard mitigation plan, which we're just going to start calling the mitigation plan, so we don't stumble over that all the time. We had a planning team meeting yesterday where we went over the survey results. Community Development has just done a really good job. They did that, they put out that survey, they got it translated into Gaelic so we could have it be out for more community members. And they've, they've just done a really good job, and that process is on time and doing very well. And then also from community development and planning and zoning, the commission voted four to one to recommend approval of amendments to Title 17 zoning that has to do with accessory dwelling units. So that will be coming up on an upcoming agenda. But you might have noticed I've said the 11th and the 18th a lot, so probably not that meeting. It'll probably be a little bit further down the road, but that's coming, that's a... There are so many changes that they're proposing that's probably going to be a work session item and cause a big discussion at the Assembly level before it goes up for a vote. In assessing, they have started their field work. Assessing staff is doing in-person field inspections in Minoshka, Bell's Flats, Chinniac, and Passag Shack. They have seen 131 properties so far. They've been warned about the bears that are walking around in that area, so they know. We've had a lot of bear activity in the flats over the last couple of weeks. They're working on a Tyler conversion. So is finance, so that is an ongoing. We're setting the dates for the third week of June in 2025 to be converting from Harris to Tyler, so that's an exciting project. And for exemptions, they are halfway through their exemptions. Cana and Calvary Ababta Church are done, and we have KCH and the Lutig Museum to go for this year. So they're way ahead of schedule compared to where they were last year, so excited about that. In engineering and facilities, we had Alaska Fish and Game go out and look at our new trail project that we just did and see, to see how it fared after that big rainstorm. It's still holding steady, so that was good news. They're out there quite a bit. They let us know the Reds were running pretty well out there. So if you have the ability to get out sultry, go, go, go. We had a GSA for the NOAA portion of our KFRC Building Fire Inspection Room. We're waiting to get back those reports. We are in a phase of monthly reports for the health facility space evaluation. That is extended until September of 2024, so our architect is working on possibilities for that. Providence attended the meeting with our, when we had the ARB last week, they decided to recommend that we move forward with the next level of design and planning for their projects that are right now. I already told you about the Solid Waste Contract Committee and what we're going to be doing for that Second Amendment. Out at the landfill, we are presenting a project for the installation of platforms that go around the scale shack. I think Assembly Member Ladue brought this up. At one point in time, the ARB reviewed that and recommended approval that the scale platforms and the Baylor Ware floor get moved forward to the Assembly. So we'll be seeing that coming up in the next couple of months, too. We're trying to space that all out a little bit so these meetings don't become completely overwhelming. At the school district, ENF staff is working with them on their capital improvement project list. They did hire a new maintenance director that started this week, so we'll build a new relationship with the new maintenance facility. At the Long-Term Care Center, ADAC has given permission to land, spread the treated soils. And Dave just, I feel like one of those newscasters that just get breaking news. The treated soils were spread at the Long-Term Care Center. It'll be sampled and tested, and we're confident that the soil should pass and require no further treatment. So we're going to be past that, so that's going to be excellent. In finance, they are doing their annual audit. This week is from a distance, and every night they write Dora an email and say, "We need this list of things," and Dora sends it, and they start all over the next day. So far, going well. We are working on a digital budget book project with ClearGov that'll be new for fiscal year '25. You're going to be hearing a lot that we're trying to switch to digital as much as we can so we can reach more people, and hopefully someday have to print and mail less. In IT, we are in the middle of that cybersecurity audit. They had 36 firms put in proposals for that. That's such a high number because they're able to do that from a distance, and that's requiring a lot of time to go through. So we extended that deadline to be scored until August 1st so they had time to adequately get through all of that information. They're still working on their power outage protocols. And that website, they're working with Megan, who is our Special Projects Officer, on that module for community development, and we're trying to see how that fits in. The company that we use has a module just for that, but because of the price point of those, we're checking out all of our options to make sure we're doing it in the cheapest way possible, as long as it's still functional with the website that we use. There are a lot of systems out there, but we're trying to make it compatible and a similar user experience if you are going to do that online. We did receive 22 new laptops that'll be going to Assembly members and borough employees, so we'll be getting laptop refreshes as they are ready. I think there's only one out so far, and the assessor got it because hers seemed to be performing the worst. And so she has that. And we bought a new drone, and it is pretty fantastic. And our GIS analysis is studying for his FAA drone operating license so that we can fly it legally. And so we're excited about what we're going to get to do with that. Out at Bayside, they are working on landscaping and cleaning up the campus, and they are in the battle, just like we are at Dark Lake with illegal dumping and people leaving trash on water vehicles and all the stuff around the dumpsters right near their site. So it seems to be an ongoing issue. This is what happens when we don't have meetings for three weeks. I just don't stop talking. And finally, on the back page of your packet, you'll see that we have a water safety camp for kids age 5 to 10. So if you know kiddos in that age group, the Coast Guard base has an event that's open to the community that runs July 22nd through 25th. They are providing transportation out from the high school out to the pool on Base Kodiak, and it's part of a project called the Zach Foundation for Water Safety. So if you want more information about that, I have a QR code that someone here at the borough will be happy to share with you.
I heard today, I was informed that they filled all the seats.
Well, maybe they'll extend their dates. We shall see. And that is all I have for the manager's report.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions? Okay, with that, we'll move on to clerks.
Okay. It's going to be a busy year for us for elections. We have three elections coming up. One would be on August 20th, which is the primary election. The second one would be the local municipal election on October 1st, and then the big one on November 5th. And the state held their training here in Kodiak on June 5th and 6th. It was very well-attended. We held it at the high school. Nominating packets are now available, filing periods from August 1st through the 15th. That's for the local municipal election. The printed packets are available in the clerk's office, and we, they are also available for download on the website, the clerk's office clerk's page, elections page. And incumbents were given and mailed out. We also mailed out incumbent packets. And also, we're sending out the packets to the villages tomorrow. So if there's anyone from the villages who would like to file for office, they will have the Assembly School Board packets in the villages. So the seats that are coming up for the local municipal election, we have two Assembly seats and two School Board seats. We also had the Dominion voting representatives today and yesterday, and they updated our machines into the latest version, which is 5.17s dot one. And for records update, we started the records management team meetings. Each department had a representative assigned to this team, so we meet now on a monthly basis. We, our second meeting was held on June 18th. And I've given you the topics that we've been covering the past two months. Our next meeting would be held either July 15th or 16th. Records retention update, that's coming up. We're just working on our contract series, and we'll have you the revision from the Community Development and Assessing Department. We are implementing the new code pertaining to Assembly Agenda Item Requests, so you have new forms in front of you. The yellow forms have been updated. The form was also emailed to you, so you can fill it out electronically. And I attached the tracking sheet at the very back of the report. Okay? And I've given you the budgets as of June 25, 2024, as of today. Events calendar, there's a NACO conference that the mayor will be attending. The AML Summer Legislative Conference in Kodiak is August 13th through the 15th. If you are going to be attending, please let me know so we can register you. And the rest are miscellaneous stuff. And then we have also staff training. The Assistant Clerk just got back from her PD3 training. She has one more to go next year, and then she can apply, Irene can apply for her Certified Municipal Clerk designation. And then Lena attended her PD4 training last week? Was it last week? I think it was last week. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. Steve, if you can hear me, I'm going to let you go ahead and go first. I think you're still muted. Can you hear us, Steve? Evidently not. So I'll move on and then let you bring up the rear. So first is Scott Smiley.
No comments.
That was easy. Bo?
No comment. Thank you.
James?
All third. No comment.
Stephen, we're right back to you if you can, if you've had a chance to clear up your mic. I appear to still be muted there. Thank you for attending. Steve, I heard you speak at the very beginning, and we needed that in order to convene the work session, so thank you.
He said he can hear us, but my, it's not working.
Okay. Well, thank you for attending once again, and we're going to go ahead and adjourn the work session, and everyone have a nice evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.